All right, sorry about that, we should be good to go.
Ready?
Yes.
We shall begin. I'd like to call to order Malibu City Council's special meeting of November 30th, 2021. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during the meeting, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Yurin?
Here.
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Crisanti?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Please join me in this pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
You have a first and second motion to approve the agenda. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yeah, and quickly, I think, Paul, maybe at some point you should let the members of the public here know there seems to be some confusion between what's on each agenda tonight. You might quickly tell them what's on this agenda to make sure everyone's at the right meeting. That's all.
All right.
Councilmember Yurin?
I have with one suggestion, Paul. Item 3B5. The acoustic technology component that deals with the sirens. I like to see if there's a way to combine that one with item 2A, the indoor warning system. Both of those that get something to do with trying to inform the residents. In the instance, there's a fire. They may be compatible. They may have some things we want to do with one and not the other. But I think trying to do them separately doesn't give us a real good perspective of what all needs. So either if we can move 2A down to or 3B5 down where 2A is and do it there, that would work for me or somebody's got another way to do it. I'll be happy with that.
So basically, you want to, you want to consider And are you using the numbering that?
No, but what I want to do is I've got 3B5, which is a discussion about picking locations for sirens to deal with a fire warning. And down below in 2A, I've got indoor warning system, which is another version of something we might be able to do to inform the residents if and when there's a fire. All I'm saying is we should.
I think, are you talking about the regular meeting or this meeting?
It's 1B5.
Councilmember Yurin?
1B5.
1B5, I'm sorry.
It's confusing.
Yeah, we can do, it used to be 3, so it's 1B5.
So you want to combine 1B5 and what else, please?
2A.
They seem kind of unrelated to me, to be honest. I mean, they're related, but unrelated. One's indoor, one's outdoor.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, the question is, I honestly wanted to do it an hour later, but you know.
Let's put them right next to each other. Okay?
How do you want to do that? Go ahead.
So when we do 1B5, we'll do 2A at the same time. How's that?
That works for me.
Okay. Is that acceptable to Karen and Mikey, who previously?
Yeah, I guess, except for one is consent and one is new business.
So you want to pull 1B5 and hear it when we hear 2A? That's what I'm hearing is what you mean.
Yes, yes.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So that means the motion is to approve a consent calendar, pulling 1B5 to hear right before 2A.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
And what is the current number for 2A?
It's 2A. Yeah, it's confusing if you keep the old stuff to.
I got it, I got it.
I've done that. It gets confusing.
Okay, all right, we're good. Thank you, Mikey and Karen. Thank you, Steve. Bruce, I think you're the next in the roll call.
Mayor Crisanti, I'm going to recall the role for the now amended motion. Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Perfect. Okay.
That means the 1B5.
Now, now, now we're going to ask if any items been pulled from the consent calendar.
Briefly before that, if I can give you a report on the posting of the agenda, the agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 24th, 2021.
Thank you.
And on the consent calendar, we do have several items pulled. They are 1B2, 1B4, and 1B7.
Now, do we, we're pulling also 1B5 and putting it back next to 2A? As well, correct? Is that correct, or are we?
Yes, it's our, yes, we already pulled it. We already moved it.
Right, okay. So do I have a motion to to approve the rest of the consent calendar?
Yes.
Yes.
So somebody said they'll move. And I, was that you, Bruce?
It was.
And then Mikey seconded it.
Or Karen did, actually.
That's fine.
Karen seconded.
Fine.
I'm easily flustered today, I guess.
That's okay.
Okay.
Don't worry, you'll have 78 hours, you'll be fine.
We have a motion and a second to approve all of the consent calendar with the exception of 1B2, 1B4, 1B5, and 1B7. Will you call the roll, please, Kelsey?
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, who pulled 1B2?
That was pulled by a member of the public. If you just give me one moment briefly. Yes, that was pulled by Ryan.
Is Ryan in the meeting?
Yes, we're unmuting him now.
Thank you.
Hello, this is an item of the warrant register, which is your approval to make payments. And on this is an item which is precluded because the separation agreement to the departed employee includes a definition of reimbursements. And that's part of the release of claims for which I think the city council settled for what likely is $300,000 of lump sum. Thank you much. Goodbye. And it's important that the city abide by the terms of the agreement to which it entered. And this is a reimbursement that on its face looks grossly inappropriate, and I don't think it passes a smell test either. So I would suggest that you remove check number 64579, which I think is on page eight of the warrants themselves. And consider approving the balance or remainder thereof as your act of approval. Now, if for some reason the staff has already caused this payment to get out prior to your approval, maybe that's a housekeeping issue. But your approval should not be to do something which the contract, which you released to the public, precludes specifically. And I did said the council and the city attorney and city manager, specific details and screenshot images of the contract, section 4.3, which specifically states that. So I don't know how more wrong this could get. And you should not whitewash it because how it got here and so far up the food chain to be presented on a warrant register, that's another question. But don't make that mistake again, please. And then the second one is check number 64611, which is for 1 million, 16, I'm sorry, the check number 64611. And the amount is $1,728,774 from the city to pay the State Water Resources Control Board some money. I'd like to know why some of our tax money is going to the State Water Resources Control Board for any reason, when in fact they should be loaning us money, I guess, to do the dirty work of the sewer MOU and forcing residents to retire a perfectly functioning sewer plant and join the city's sewer plant. So what's that for? Please explain. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. With the permission of the rest of the council, I'd like to ask if Lisa is available to comment on these items?
Certainly, Mayor and Council, I'm happy to comment. I'll take the biggest payment first, which was to the State Water Resources Control Board. That $1.7 million payment is the annual loan payment for the Civic Center wastewater treatment facility. And that does not come from the general city tax money. That comes from the assessment district for the wastewater plant. So that money is, again, we're, I think we're in like year two of our 30-year repayment to the state board for the loan for building the wastewater treatment facility. So that's what that large payment is. And then regarding the payment to city manager Reva, prior city manager Reva Feldman, that was a reimbursement request that was submitted well prior to the settlement agreement. It was for expenses incurred in September, at late September, early October of 2020, when Cal OES asked her to come to Oregon to assist with those jurisdictions when they were having their major wildfires. And the reason the payment is happening now is because the city just now received the reimbursement from Cal OES for all of those expenses, some of which were paid directly by the city and some were paid directly by Reva Feldman. And so we reimbursed her for that longstanding reimbursement request.
So this was a pass through of something from a year and a half ago, basically? Or almost two years ago?
Because Cal OES could, yeah, a year ago, a year and a few months.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for enlightening us. And do we have any progress on a new loan for the, for the second phase of, of the sewer?
The city is on the pre-approved list for phase two with the state water board. And we are also hopeful that as part of that, there may be some grants. What I'm hearing now is there is money flowing through from the infrastructure bill to the various states that may then create pots of money where grants could be eligible for just these kinds of projects. So we're in pretty good standing with them and Rob and I have been working hard to make sure they have all the information they need to make that loan and potential grant process seamless.
Right. Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions for Lisa? Okay. Do I, is there a motion out there?
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number 1B2. Can we take a vote, please?
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to item 1B4.
And we did have one speaker for this item, Mayor. It was Norm Haney.
Well, we're always willing to hear from Norm. Is he available?
We are unmuting him now. Norm, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute. Norm, there should be a pop-up asking you to unmute.
Are you there, Norm?
Okay, yeah, finally. I've been trying to unmute. You know, I think it's time that we started having city council meeting hearings and planning commission meeting hearings in the city council chambers. I believe that the people that will attend these meetings are 95% vaccinated. And it just seems to me that the level of communication when people are in person is substantially higher than the level of communication through the media that we're currently using, the Zoom meeting media. So those are my comments. I mean, people are going to football games, they're going to bars, they're going to restaurants. The city chambers is huge. Be very easy for people to be masked and stay six feet apart and to clean the microphone every time there's a speaker. It's just a thought. But I really think that it's time that we started considering setting up that system again. Thank you very much for your time and I hope you all had a good Thanksgiving day.
Thank you, Norm. Bruce, I saw your hand was raised.
Yeah, I decided I didn't have anything to say.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve 1B4?
I'll move to approve 1B4.
A motion to approve 1B4. Is there a second?
I will second.
A motion and a second to approve item 1B4. Kelsey, will you take the roll?
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes, and I hope we get back in person soon as well, Norm.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes, that takes us, that takes us to item 1B7 because we're moving 1B5 to the end. Who pulled this and how can we help them?
We also had one speaker for this item and it is Norm Haney.
Hi, Norm. Are you there still?
Yes, I am.
What can you tell us about item 1B7?
Well, I'm not sure that it's the best use of the funds. I'm concerned that we're losing planners right and left. It takes a long time for a planner to understand Malibu's development standards and how those standards are currently being interpreted. I think it was Adrian that mentioned it takes a year and a half before a planner fully understands all of Malibu's development standards. I may be off-base in suggesting this, but is it possible that the money could be used to increase the salaries of the planners that we currently have so that we can at least tell them how much we appreciate them and and, and hope they stay on longer than they have been in the past? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Steve, I see your hand. You're muted, Steve.
I agree with Norm. We are losing planners. And I spoke to Richard yesterday. I emailed him. We communicated. And apparently he was going to go meet with the HR department to try and, I guess they do exit interviews to try and get some real handle on why these people are leaving and what steps we should take. I agree, we've got a problem with the planners. So, but I don't think 50, this 50 grand is going to make a hell of a lot of difference. But what I think, I did want to mention about this item, you know, this was a project to gentrify Civic Center Way over in that area. And when the project came before, nobody brought up the fact that it was going to cost us additional 50,000 bucks a year to maintain that once we built it. And I guess just it's more of a looking forward thing. You know, the 50 grand is not going to kill us one way or another. But when we sort of project these projects and what they're going to cost, I think we should also be looking over the horizon, saying, you know, the additional costs is associated with them dealing with maintenance and that kind of stuff that we should at least know about before we approve these things. So that's all I got on that one. And with that, I will move approval of item 1B7.
We have a motion to approve 1B7. Is there?
I'll second it, but I'd like to hear from Jesse on this items. I see him sitting there looking all nicely dressed up and ready to speak.
Jesse, are you available to speak to us?
I am available. I can answer any specific questions you have. This, this is actually a, an amendment to our current agreement. And what it is, is it adds three areas. Those areas are, as I think it was mentioned there, you can see in the staff report, Civic Center Way, which is the new Civic Center Way project that was built, which is about $24,000 of it of that budget, I guess, on an annual basis, but 2,000 per month, as this is just through the remainder of our current fiscal year. And then City Hall, which we technically And then uh, City Hall, which we technically do not have landscape maintenance for at this time. Enhanced has been nice enough to help us out on, on a one-off basis and and actually uh, do some of the landscape maintenance here at City Hall as requested uh, as we've needed it. And then the final, the final portion of that amount is for weekend trash service at all of our parks. Uh, we do typically have part-time staff that have been able to help with that at, at times in the past. And I, this is if you don't know, it actually takes a better part of six to seven hours per day to go around and dump the trash at all of our parks due to the amount of trash cans at each park and then how spread out they are. So um, you throw in the, the traffic on PCH and just, like I said, the just the varying factors that come into that, how much trash in the trash cans, that's the final amount for that. So one quick note is that this, uh, this amendment is just for the remainder of this fiscal year. And that's because our contract with them is up at the end of this fiscal year. So we would expect to bring a new agreement to the council uh, as we get close to the new fiscal year um, for your review and approval.
So we'll hear from you again probably in May or June.
Yeah, and one of the things we would, what we'll do is we'll, we'll make sure that the agreement comes to city council for approval. And then depending on when that comes, typically that would be part of the budget planning process as we move forward. At least that would be in the budget. Um, but we would want to bring the agreement to you first as it's it kind of dictates not only, I mean, it dictates the next three years of our landscape maintenance. So yes, you will see it first is the long answer there.
All right. Thank you.
And Jesse, I just want to thank you for the uh, work you had done at Civic Center Way. Uh, for that street that, for those neighbors there, they've definitely said it's vastly improved and they, they appreciate it.
Yeah, and we're, I, I know you had mentioned the, the work itself as far as, well, what, the little work that we've done so far, just to trim it up and make it a little bit more viewable as you turn. But if, if we need to do additional, additional maintenance over there, we certainly can to, to make it as safe as possible.
I feel very secure that those neighbors will let me know.
I'm, I'm glad that people have given you assurances of that, Mikey. Uh, so can we pass uh, item one B seven at this point? Is someone gonna make a motion to pass it?
Mayor Grisanti, you do have a motion on the floor if you'd like to have.
I'm sorry, that's right. And then we just, I'm sorry, Jesse.
Council member.
Yes.
Council member Pearson.
Yes.
Council member fair.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Silverstein.
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and now in an attempt to really confuse me, we're gonna do, we're gonna go to item two A and one B five at the same time. So that we can uh, go back and forth with the various concerns we have about these two items since they are they are both concerned with notifying people. And so I guess what we should do is hear the staff report on uh, item two A.
Okay.
And then uh, we'll go from there and tie it into one B five.
Sounds good.
All right, that looks like Susan. Hi, Susan.
Good evening, mayor and council. Very happy to be here at four thirty in the afternoon. Um, I have a short PowerPoint to help kind of explain this, uh, this communication stuff. It's all very complicated. I'm gonna do my best to give a very high-level view of where we're at on investigating indoor emergency warning systems. Um, but also here, um, in the Zoom, we have Hans Lutz, who can help me with some of the more technical questions some of you may have. Um, but first, let me begin with this. So, uh, next slide. All right, so as many of you may recall, in August of twenty twenty, we had a Siren feasibility report presented. Uh, first of his presentation to the Public Safety Commission and ultimately came to the council again in September. However, when it came to the Public Safety Commission, uh, one of the things in the report that was pointed out is that sirens um, while they can be very effective at alerting people, they are primarily for outdoor warning. Indoor warning capabilities are limited, uh, especially in areas like Malibu with lots of you know, hills and valleys and well-built homes with, you know, triple-pane windows and insulated walls. Sometimes the sound is not gonna carry to the interior of a building, especially when the wind is howling, it can make it very difficult. Uh, so because of that fact, the commission had recommended that staff pursue getting more information about uh, warning systems that operate inside the home. So we went back to the consultant who did our Siren feasibility study and um, asked them to do a report for us to show us different ways to do indoor warning. Next slide. So in that report, they summarize basically five different alerting methodologies for indoor alerting. Uh, one of them is a tone alert radio uh, which requires installation of a simulcast radio system to you know, essentially to broadcast it. And, and I want to say with all of these systems, they're similar in that it's a system where somebody has control of sending a message. They then activate some kind of uh, radio transmitter to transmit the information. And then it's received in the home by a kind of device. So, but all of these work a little bit differently. So with a tone alert radio, we would have to purchase these, the simulcast radio system. Uh, they recommend two or three, probably three transmitters to really get the uh, transmission to cover the whole city. And they estimate that could cover cost, you know, once you get everything involved with, you know, obtaining, installing, et cetera, it couldn't run anywhere from two hundred and fifty thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then each receiver for, that people would purchase for in their home, they cost three hundred to four hundred and fifty dollars. So the infrastructure cost for doing that is um, fairly high. Another way to do this is through frequency modulation or FM alerting. And what that does is you utilize existing infrastructure of FM radio stations. And you contract with an FM alert vendor, and there's only one um, who installs equipment at the FM stations. But at FM stations that actually were, you know, our residents actually can receive their transmissions, obviously. So we choose a couple where uh, you know, where you can get pretty good reception here in Malibu. The FM station would have to agree to have the equipment installed at their site. Uh, we don't pay for that equipment. That's paid for by the FM alert vendor. They install it, but of course, uh, we are on the hook for a license fee that's ongoing and can run up to a million dollars for three to five years of service. So again, it, we're not paying for the infrastructure, but we're, we're paying for the infrastructure through a license fee. Um, another option is through, they list here is iPaws integrated public alert warning system, which I'm not even sure why they included that. iPaws is the overarching alert warning coordination system operated by FEMA. And most of it runs on internet-based um, alerting system. So that's where we get our wireless emergency alerts, you know, like your Amber Alerts is all through iPaws. So is the emergency alert system, EAS, is run through iPaws. Uh, but also iPaws can also um, issue the, the National Weather Radio alerts. And that has been done in areas where they have tornadoes. It hasn't been as done as much here on the West Coast. So that's all part of iPaws. And then the National Oceanic and Atmospheric, no, I was just saying Noah, the NOAA weather radios. They use something, um, they do it two ways. One way, they can use a specific area messaging encoding. Basically, what that means is you can have a NOAA radio, which we gave out a lot at our first year Woolsey anniversary, if you recall, the NOAA radios. If you get a NOAA radio that has same code capability, you can program it to receive a message based on that code. So if a message is sent out through the NOAA weather radio, if, if it's for what we're coded for, so fire, so the code would be for fire, obviously. So if they send it out, your radio, you can have it on all the time. It doesn't make any noise. But if a uh, alert is sent out with that code for fire, then your radio is gonna make some noise. The other uh, kind of in, you know, National Weather Radio um, system that's out there is where the National Weather Radio, it's on all the time, but the city could get equipment if they agreed, that would enable us to interrupt the National Weather Radio transmission. And we basically take over that radio transmission to put our message out. So similar to the FM one where we're using existing FM stations, only in this case, we're using the National Weather Radio and using it to, to interrupt and put our message out. Now, there's pros and cons to all of these. A lot of it has to do with cost and infrastructure. And to be honest, a lot of these have not been fully tested in Malibu. So when the um, Public Safety Commission, they looked at all these, they looked at the report and they could see pros and cons to all these problems. And um, that's why if we go to the next slide, their feeling was that we're probably better off. Can you go to the next slide, please? There we go. Um, the Public Safety Commission, they, they built this indoor emergency warning system ad hoc, which had two commissioners plus our local experts, Hans Lutz, Richard Barbie from our cert team. And um, also who else? I was there. And uh, Brett Wilberth, who's the executive member of our team of the commission. Anyways, with Richard and Hans being our communications experts to help guide us. But essentially, uh, through our meetings, they thought that a lot of these systems have pros and cons. Weren't necessarily ready for, you know, full uh, deployment in Malibu. And maybe the city would be better off by enhancing the existing infrastructure so as, so when these systems um, come to a point where we would want to pursue them, because some of them have a hefty price tag, that we would be more capable of rolling out the other systems. So one of the thoughts was to enhance FM radio coverage in Malibu. Uh, investigate utilizing the city's existing but dormant AM transmitter. Uh, which, you know, in the past didn't work very well, but there's some thoughts that maybe we could get it to work better. Um, then also evaluating the use of the cert, the community emergency response T city uh, UHF repeater to operate a tone alert radio system. Again, remember that tone alert system is the one I said where we would have to put in some radio systems up to three where to transmit a radio signal into people's homes. So looking at can we use our existing repeater to do some kind of tone alert radio system? And then the last one they thought is to continue to explore the FM alert system to see if that would be the best option for Malibu. And all of these have pros and cons and uh, some of the reasons, some of the things that make different systems, better or worse, is whether or not we have local control of the system. And uh, the the uh, FM alert system, we could have local control. But a lot of the other systems, we wouldn't have local control. We would be dependent on the county to activate an alert. Let's go to the next slide. So since the uh, committee last met, actually, for that, but anyways, after they made that recommendation, a couple of new developments came about. Well, one of them was that we found out that Los Angeles County Office of Emergency Management was already pretty far along with working with NOAA on the weather radio program. We didn't really know that. And that's part of what we didn't like about that system, because we would have to try to get county to get this going. Um, but it turns out they were already doing it. Doesn't mean it's gonna be a perfect system for us, but it could be a tool that could be useful. And in fact, in, at the six-thirty meeting, uh, Jeanie O'Donnell from County OEM is getting a representation on this program because they're ready to roll it out. And it actually does work right now. They, she said that people could actually get a NOAA weather radio with the same code capability and receive alerts. But there's still a lot of questions about how that will work. And Jeanie will be answering a lot of those questions at six-thirty. But I can tell you, one of the problems with this system is that first of all, the county is in charge of it. And also the uh, they can't geofence, meaning they can't target it. So if they send out an alert, that means it's going countywide, even beyond county. So they're probably gonna be very selective and hesitant in how they uh, do this. Cause if you recall, the controversy was like, we are messaging. There was always a lot of concern about the bleed over from we are messages, because you can't, you know, target them. And as far as we know, they're not able to target these messages. Of course, on the other side of it, not everyone's gonna have a NOAA radio with this same code. So it's only gonna be people in fire danger areas. So it's not like it's gonna be waking up everybody. It's only gonna be waking up everybody with a fire danger, with the fire code in their radio. But that includes, you know, Lancaster, Santa Clarita, you know, all, all across the LA County region. So it is a pretty wide net that it um, blankets. So that's kind of the downside. Um, then alert FM capabilities, um, members of the ad hoc um, met with the vendor and got some more information on that. Let's go to the next slide. I think that has Yeah, so okay, so I already went out of this, so backing up a little bit, sorry. Um, so with the county system, it can run on batteries. It doesn't need internet, doesn't need electricity. It can be hooked to a bed shaker or strobe light options. For um, people who can't hear, people who are uh, immobile, it could wake them up. It is no cost to this city. The radios are fairly inexpensive. But again, the downside controlled by the county and it can't geofence. Next slide. So with alert FM, it also can run on batteries, doesn't require internet, doesn't require electricity, since you can run it on batteries. It can geofence. That's kind of the good thing about alert FM. You can target your alerts, so you're not having this huge bleed over. And also it's controlled by the city. We would have control over sending the message. We don't have to depend on the county to send a message, which I can tell you that's kind of a big deal. Um, I've experienced that in Woolsey, Woolsey Fire. I requested a we a message and it never happened. We didn't have control over it and it was a real bummer and we, it's nice to have control over those options. Um, also the alert FM is connected to the state shake alert system. I don't know if you, you're familiar with that, but that's the, was quite early morning system. So there is right there, kind of a, um, the state is somewhat invested in this type of technology, so that's a good sign. But it is expensive. So again, uh, there's the cost factor. So you kind of have to weigh the cost benefit of all these things. Let's see, next slide. So we're bringing this to the council boat because we wanted to kind of fill you in on where we're at with all this stuff. You know, give you the, the recommendation from the commission. And um, since some of these recommendations do have, you know, fiscal impact, we wanted to get your input and direction on where you think we should be going with this. Um, if we should just implement the commission's recommendation to maybe strengthen our infrastructure while we continue to explore these other options. Like, you know, further evaluate the FM alert system, maybe test the NOAA radio system the county is doing. Or maybe explore other options. And Hans Lutz is on here. Hans, I don't know if you had more to add. I certainly am not a technical expert on FM alert and some of these other systems. So I don't know if you have anything to add. I mean, we can unmute Hans to see if he can help provide a little more information.
Hans is also signed up under public comments. I wasn't sure how you wanted to handle that.
Um, I had asked him if he could help me with the presentation, so if he's available. Unless he wants to save it for public comment, he could do that.
No, I have no public comment. I think Susan did a terrific job summarizing this, and I'm here if you have a question.
Hans, we saw the, your uh, and a, a letter that went back and forth. And it, you, you did a good job of laying out the uh, what the benefits and costs are. Uh, you seem to be more in favor of one than the other. Would you like to talk about that one for a moment?
Uh, well, certainly it, I, I think the NOAA, the weather service system is very good and it's robust. And they have one big advantage over FM. Uh, well, certainly it, I I think the NOAA, the Weather Service system is very good and it's robust, and they have one big advantage over FM alert. And that is the placement of their antenna. Uh KBU due to FCC ridiculous rules is not allowed to put its antenna on Point Doom, but NOAA can. And with that, they have much better signal coverage of Malibu than than KBU would with the FM alert. We get it with FM alert, though, we would also use. One of several candidate radio stations on the FM dial in the South Bay that put in a very good signal into Malibu. So we would, we would make up for that NOAA advantage on that. That said, uh and I I'd like to emphasize the. The FM alert radio, it rides on KBU's airwaves, but it doesn't benefit KBU in any way. It will not wake up a radio to KBU. It will not promote KBU. KBU doesn't touch it. It's just using our airwave to reach the signal for the for the city. Uh and it would be simultaneously, you know, Susan could draw a geo fence and wake up. One of the evacuation areas in Malibu. And every FM radio station that's connected to this. Be it in Santa Monica, Malibu, or Long Beach, would send the same computer codes that would simply send an alarm. To people's radio clocks that say, there's a fire, seek information. And and the the it could have the city's website, it could have the city's AM station, it could have KBU. It could have any, any, it it doesn't turn on the radios to KBU. Uh, I'm not sold on it yet. I have a gigantic box over here in the radio station right now where we're going to test it. Uh, as as you know, KBU right now is building boosters. In eastern Malibu and past Trancas to extend our signals in both directions. Assuming those are built by first quarter of next year, which we're on track. Uh, I think we'll be able to hit ninety five percent of Malibu. With the KBU signal on FM alert. We'll always have a problem east of uh Duke's Restaurant around the curve there. We'll never get a signal in. But the good news is is that uh the K Jazz in Long Beach or the KXLU at at uh. Loyola Marymount, or maybe one of the Spanish language stations, doesn't matter. All we need is to use their signal. Which reaches eastern Malibu really well, and they'll be equally well served. Uh, the 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 big problem with NOAA, the the gigantic problem is that they're using the EAS system. And as of right now, I I pay a, I'm I'm on some committees. I own a radio station in another market up at Mammoth Lakes where we're having big issues with this. The state EAS plan has not been updated for twenty years. And the FCC is adamant about not allowing. Those EAS tones that the National Weather Service is going to be relying on. They're technically not legal. The the uh NOAA does not have authority but from the state of California. FEMA or the FCC to do this. Now, they're the federal government and they're not gonna get fined. But if if those tones were to go out on the National Weather Service thing, KBU would be required under FCC to carry them. But that's illegal. So we we have a big conundrum here. Plus, now you mix in the sheriff. And the Board of Supervisors, what you're gonna hear from at six o'clock tonight is not coming from the sheriff. It's coming from the Board of Supervisors, and they don't exactly get along right now. The sheriff has not. Been willing to share his jurisdiction over EAS. He's very jealously guarding that. And, you know, OEM OEM at the county may be working something out with the sheriff. I don't know, but operationally, I do not see possible how the county can legally bypass the sheriff. To to send a message out. And like, and the sheriffs, the current system technically. It's it's not just for wildfires, it's for everything. The EAS system from a nuclear war to a tsunami to everything. And if the sheriff pushes the button for a a an EAS alarm. In in at his headquarters in Monterey Park, every single radio station, television station and cable system. From Blythe, California to Neptune's Net in Malibu is gonna go off at the same time. And it it could be just for a little fire in Malibu, but that's why. In in my forty years in broadcasting in Los Angeles, the EAS system has never once been activated. Not during the Northridge quake, not during the LA riots, because it's too big. It's it's too broad of an area and there's.
I'm sorry, you know, one thing I just received some clarification from uh Jeannie at the county that they are able. To send the NOAA their their um alert to just the transmitter at Point Doom.
They may be, they may be able to legally, they may be able to technically, yes. But under the State Office of Emergency Services EAS plan and the local Los Angeles plan, which was adopted thirty years ago. They're not supposed to do that, and until that plan gets changed by the governor's office, that doesn't exist.
So I think essentially what we're saying is there's still unknowns with the county system, but I wanted the the council and the county to know that it's happening. Because it's happening regardless of what we do. It's kind of happening in the background and it could be a useful tool. It maybe it won't be, but. I think that everyone needs to know that that's happening, so. I can, because right, do you have uh additional questions, counsel?
Mikey has uh his hand raised.
Oh, we I need to wait for public comment first, though.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment? And Hans, thank you for your help, by the way.
We just have one speaker left. It's Doug Stewart.
Doug, are you available?
I am here.
Thank you, Doug.
You know, when you uh come in as a sweep after Hans and Susan, there's not a whole lot to be said. But let me put my hat on and say that I'm here speaking as the vice chair of the Public Safety Commission. And I was the chair and the chair of this ad hoc group that we put together in the Public Safety Commission. Um, quickly, I think uh the Public Safety Commission feels like this is probably one of the most important aspects of our job in public safety. And the phrase that we keep using all the time is alert and advise. And I I know I've talked to, I think, almost every city council member here at one point or the other about this. My test is at three o'clock in the morning, can we alert everybody and then advise them what to do? And the options that are on the table are broad. We've got nineteen fifty's technology with sirens. To current day technology with uh FM alert. So it's a broad range of options. There's not gonna be one solution fits everything, but we are trying to find the best solution of all. Now, I want to talk a little bit about uh where we are on this. We're nowhere close to making a recommendation to the council about where to spend money and where to put our focus. We're probably looking at that maybe by the end of twenty two, maybe twenty three. As Hans pointed out, some of this requires some significant due diligence. I will tell you, on FM alert is probably our favorite right now for indoor warning. If you, some of you go back to the eighties when we had uh tone and voice pagers. Think of that as what you would have in your house, similar to a smoke alarm. But it could be portable. You could have it in your car, maybe a variety of places. But if you go back to our situation over Thanksgiving, where the power was out, internet was out, cellphone was out and so forth. How do we alert our our people as to what's going on? A fire that had taken, that might have started after all this occurred, we couldn't tell them what was happening. Maybe the sirens have worked, maybe they wouldn't. But with FM alert, we could talk to them and say, alert and have it controlled by the city down to a particular evacuation zone or an area. So this has a lot of benefit to us. We understand it's actually being used in Alabama right now for tornado alert. And they have all the public uh FM radio stations hooked into it. And we've got to prove that, but that's that's type of things we need to evaluate and see how it would work. So we're gonna be coming back with better options, better solutions. But we wanted to make sure that you were aware of where we were on this and we were making progress. But there's a lot of things to look at and there's no one single solution for everything. Um, the committee has got some great members in it. Uh Richard Garvey, Hans, uh Brent, besides uh Keegan and myself and Susan. So we're making progress, but there's still a lot more work and due diligence to be done. And I'm available for answering questions as well. By the way, three of the uh six members have ham radio licenses, so we've got a a little bit of an idea of where uh frequencies and ohms and watts are, so.
Thank you, Doug. Mikey, I think you're first, and then Bruce.
I was gonna say, I I would, first of all, I just appreciate uh all the information we were given tonight, and I do think this is the. Future of alerts that, you know, need to be a part of our toolkit uh for emergencies a hundred percent. And I I I agree, obviously, we're not ready, so my motion would be. No surprise to send this back to the Public Safety Commission and to keep us. And ask them to keep us appraised and bring forward information and recommendations as they feel it's ready.
Okay. Uh Bruce, I believe you're next, unless somebody wants to second that. In which case you'd still be next after that. You're up, Bruce.
Hey, um, so I I do appreciate the information, too. Um, I'm not sufficiently technologically savvy to understand a lot of it. Um, I know that Hans sent us an email of a whole bunch of questions he has about the NOAA. Matter, but I think that's for the next meeting that we're having. So actually, we're gonna get more information. At the adjourned, the continuation meeting that we're gonna have in an hour or so. Uh, you know. Hearing that we're gonna get an actual recommendation end of two thousand twenty two, twenty three is concerning. Uh, that's not a criticism. It's just, it's concerning because we have a a problem right now. I mean. Couple days ago, many people were in Malibu without power, and when the power went down, so did um cell service. So we need some kind of radio um notification. I don't know what kind, but some kind. I'll tell you, I, maybe this is one of the things we're talking about. Maybe it's not. My son gave me a two-way radio that he had programmed. To pick up police channels and and other things, so that if there were some kind of emergency, at least we would get some kind of alert. It's just, he kept scanning. To see if anything was on there. Um, I don't know if that's something we're talking about. I don't know what the cost of that is. But that I felt much com- more comfortable having that, knowing that I had at least some contact with the outside world. Uh, but, you know, this is something we definitely need to solve, because people need to be able to be alerted. Uh, I like the idea of the one that's just sitting there silently unless there's a problem and then it comes on and tells you or it's on, that just you get the sound. And I would hope that we're exploring that. Um, but, you know, waiting till the end of next year or the year after. Uh, I don't wanna say it's unacceptable, but it's pretty close to unacceptable.
Thank you, Bruce. Steve?
Uh, yes, uh, I'd like to thank Susan and Hans. There was a good presentation. Doug, thank you and Keenan for the work you guys are doing. Uh, that's one of the reasons I wanted to look at this. Uh, and and I guess my question is, you know, when when we get to the sirens. I I've got some concerns with those, but I think we've got like nine hundred thousand dollars or something set aside to pay for those things. So my question, Doug, is if we could take some of that money and allocate it toward looking at these systems. Uh, getting, you know, back to Bruce's point. Accelerating our review of these, making sure if we, Steve, we can get them in earlier, is that a possibility? Is that something that is worth taking a look at?
Doug, if you're still available, I think you have a question to answer.
Let's see. There, I'm on. There we are. Yeah, um, well, a couple of things. Uh, first off, I think this may be grant money. Uh, Susan probably has a better concept of that than I do on the sirens. So it it may not be fungible that we can move it around. But the other thing is, and by the way, uh Bruce, I couldn't agree with you more, twenty two, twenty three is gut wrenching. But the technology hasn't arrived yet for us. Um, just as Hans is testing some of the equipment right now at his station. We would be one of the first ones to actually have this in California, I understand. So this is, this is where we're on cutting edge, and we need to do our due diligence to make sure it really works as advertised. And uh there's only one vendor for FM alert, and while that may be our leading candidate right now. Um, you know, we've got to evaluate what our options are there, but we are diligently working on it. And it's not a question of us putting effort into it. It's about the technology arriving in time for us to be able to deploy. Uh, but I I agree, if we could move money around, that'd be great. But right now, I don't know that we could recommend spending it on anything uh other than what we've got the grants for at the moment. Uh, I'm open minded about it. And some of you know, I have concerns about the siren system. But it's one of the tools in the toolbox, and the county is also working on uh a siren system for the beaches. So between those systems, we may be able to have a siren system in town that supplements or is part of our alert system. It just, it's going to take pieces coming together. There's no single, there's no single solution in the toolbox, I guess is the best way to put it.
Thank you, Doug. I see Lisa has raised her hand. Uh, do you have some input for us about whether money can be moved?
I do. Um, so specifically, this um is a FEMA hazard mitigation grant that was specifically for. Outdoor sirens, and so it is not eligible to be moved. And I think as Doug had mentioned, the thought was this is one tool in the toolbox. And certainly what Susan has presented tonight about the indoor sirens is another one. And that being said, it, you know, clearly we could go out and look for grants. To fund that particular program, but this, and I'm sure there there may be some, again, with this infrastructure. Bill that came through the federal government, there are all kinds of pots of money um and resiliency of communities. Um, and re- response to fire and things like that are are packaged within that bill. Um, and I know there is other money flowing through to FEMA in the bill that may open up other hazard mitigation grants. But the one that is related to one B five was very specifically for the sirens and we. Um, it was a very long process to get it approved by FEMA, um, and it is not fungible at this point.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, Mikey, I'd like to second your motion now. And then I'm gonna add, call on Bruce to discuss it, I guess. If you're willing to do that.
That's, I just have a quick question, which I'm I'm gonna support the most. Uh, any chance we can get money from SCE, since they're the ones that are causing us to need to have this communication?
Well, if we all cross our fingers and wish real hard. I know that we all think it's a great idea. So I would love for it to to happen.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's not a facetious question. I'm very serious.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not being facetious. I'm, I really, I would like it to happen, but I don't think any of us are equipped to answer that question. Of whether or not SCE will do that for us. I understand the next meeting is gonna have someone from SCE. Reporting to us, so perhaps we can ask them then. And I see Karen, are you done? May I recognize Karen now?
Thanks, Paul. Um, yeah, I was gonna say, let's leave that question for the six thirty meeting. Uh, I have a related question. Uh, that I will bring up at that time. Um, and I just wanted to also thank this committee and Susan. Sorry, my dogs only bark when I talk. Um, anyway, uh. Yeah, I I'm ready to vote on this motion.
Kelsey, can you call the role, please?
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes, but with a question. Is this dealing with both of the things that we're addressing?
This is dealing with two only.
So I thought, okay, yes.
So now we're we're.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're now circling back to I to one B five, and we have more information as a result of our discussion there. And I think that uh Steve, you pulled it. Would you like to lead that discussion off?
Yeah, just just a couple of questions. You know, it it has been a while. The last time the consultant came in front of the city council, I listened to that meeting and they did the same thing in that meeting that they did in front of the Public Safety Commission. Was to put some caveats around how effective this the sirens could be, and I understand the thing, having as many tools. In your toolbox toolbox as you can can uh. But just, I had some questions. I mean, do we have any idea if we hook this thing up, what percentage of houses will actually be. Informed as a result of putting sirens on? And the reason I ask that, after that meeting, I spoke to a newspaper writer who was writing stuff up in Marin County. Where apparently they also had sirens, and they put sirens up and they tried it during a uh San Ana event, I guess. And they didn't work, so they took half of them down and put them on top of cars, and the cars drove around. Uh, to send the send the message out. So I'm just, you know, the question is, I, how effective are they going to be? Uh, is there going to, is there a maintenance cost of these things? I mean, these things, if we put them up, will be around for some period of time. We, you know, when I was growing up in upstate New York, we had air air raid sirens. Uh, and they used to have to go out and do maintenance on those things. I don't know if there's maintenance required for this. Do we know how much that is? I'm just trying to make sure when we head down this path, we've got all the information we need to make a good decision.
I think Rob DeBoe just turned on his camera because he wants to wade into this.
Oh, uh, uh. So, yes, those are very good questions. Part of the.
Part of the scope of the work, the con, that the consultant is going to do is prepare a report, design a report to kind of uh, make sure all those items are are covered in there. He's going to look about the effectiveness and kind of what position, what kind of uh, um, places will be effective with the, with the sirens. But but also I I like your idea to make sure we we include in there the maintenance costs, operation costs and then in there too. So we know what we're getting into uh, and once we finally uh, choose to move forward with construction on it. So uh, make sure all of that's in there.
We don't know what mains would potentially could be at this point. Is that what you're telling me?
Um, I I I don't know the top of my head what the maintenance cost would be for for that, so.
And the consultant also mentioned, depending upon where he puts these siren locations, he may need a mitigated negative debt also uh, to deal. So I I just trying to figure out as I move down the road. You know, we've got this grant. Is the grant going to cover what we have? We need more money just so we got. You know, I'm on the administrative finance committee. I'm supposed to be thinking administration and finance. So that's what I'm trying to do.
I see Lisa is, has her hand up. Perhaps she has some finance information and then I'm going to call on Bruce, who has got his hand up.
I do. I just want to clarify that um, those are very good questions um, in terms of the ongoing maintenance um, and can certainly be folded in because um, there's money in this grant. This grant is solely for the design and the environmental permitting that will be necessary for this system. The city would then have to go forward. We would look for other grants, again, future hazard mitigation grants to implement the construction. Um, so this grant was specifically done as an advanced planning grant through the Hazard Mitigation Program to allow the city to get to the point where we would have a biddable project. And as part of that biddable project, we could answer all those questions, which would be the long-term maintenance. Who's really getting um, service in terms of who can hear, that would all be folded into this design.
So if that's for the two hundred thousand dollars we're talking about in this thing, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, so the the contract is this, we have approximately nine hundred, I'd have to put my glasses on and read. Yeah, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars was the anticipated project cost. And that was literally just design and environmental permitting. So certainly this amount is well within the budget. There's additional funds to do whatever, construction documents and permitting that would need to be done. Um, and then at that point, we would have a project that would go out and get, we would go get grants for. If the council desired at that point to move forward.
Just, thank you, Lisa.
Just one more, I mean, just so I understand. All the things you talked about, we want to get, we want to get identification of what long-term maintenance is going to be. Is, does that covered in the two hundred thousand dollars we're spending now? Or do we have to go to the nine hundred thousand dollars to get that? And when do we get, I mean, do we get some information before we go and spend the nine hundred or how does that work?
So this is really the first step to kind of delve into the, we have that initial study um, that was done by Mission Part, um, Mission Critical Partners. So we're now taking the next step to actually look at where these sirens could go. How you would figure out what land they're going on, because it's not necessarily, we may have to get easements. Um, so they're going to be doing a much more specific site-by-site analysis to get us to that point. Um, I don't know, we didn't, I don't remember, maybe Rob can speak to it. We certainly didn't put in what are ongoing maintenance costs into this. Um, I think that's probably something that could be added fairly.
That's something that we could definitely add to it or kind of make sure we have enough information from the design to make sure we can have that. That's, that's pretty important to know, uh, power consumption needs, any battery backup um, costs and what whatnot, what needs to be replaced after a certain amount of years. And that information will be valuable during the design process.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Bruce?
I also make sure I understand um, where the money is. The hundred and ninety-eight thousand that we're going to approve, if we approve this, is that part of the grant money? Or is that money that we, the city are spending separate apart from the grant?
So i- it's part of the grant money. And the way FEMA grants work is FEMA pays, so there's an award. FEMA is responsible for seventy, they'll give you seventy-five percent of the cost. The city pays twenty-five percent of the cost. Um, you know, and and twenty-five percent of the cost can also be like our staff time, for example. So Public Works, as they're managing the contract, that staff time goes against the twenty-five percent that is the city's contribution. So the bulk of this hundred and ninety-eight thousand will be reimbursed by the grant.
Okay, so so that that was going to be my next question, actually, was the ratio of us versus them. So in a nine hundred thousand dollar project, we're going to spend approximately a quarter of a million dollars, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, and you know, I I hear the, the term tool in the toolbox. You know, there are a lot of toolbox with a lot of tools in them that nobody ever uses. So is this a tool that's worth having is the question, not just is it a tool? Um, but I guess that decision's already been made. I I, I don't like the thought of spending a lot of money, even if it's other people's money for something, for a tool that's not going to be very effective. Especially when we're spending a quarter of a million. And we were just talking about other things that we could possibly be spending that quarter of a million for that will be more effective, a better tool. So I don't know how far down this road we've gone already. I'm up, just, you know, talking off the top of my head. I, I'm not really sure where I land on this one.
Thank you, Bruce. Uh, I have a a quick comment. Basically, what we're doing now is trying to fill in the blank that was left when the phone lines took away copper lines. When we had copper lines, everybody in Malibu was part of a different phone tree for every neighborhood. So when you got, when somebody heard something, they called you. You were responsible for calling two more people. Those people were responsible for calling four people. Pretty soon, everybody knew what was going on. And when with our, our uh, dependency on phone systems that aren't going to be working. The object here is to try and get the message out. And if only one in ten people in the neighborhood hears a siren and they go out and start blowing their horn on their car and driving around the neighborhood, people are going to figure out what's going. You're laughing at me, Steve, but that was part of the phone tree instructions. And it it worked great in Corral Canyon uh, in oh seven and back in uh, eighty-nine, I think it was. Anyway, it's primitive stuff actually worked. But we got to try a lot of things if we're going to avoid a disaster. So if somebody wants to make a motion, I'd be glad to second it. And Mikey is up next and then Steve.
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to move this forward and I'll also comment that, yeah, it is, I think it's an important tool. We just talked about indoor radios. How do we know who's going to have them? What does that do for visitors in town? In my neighborhood, when Woolsey came through, we had two senior citizens that didn't leave because they didn't know. Um, would the siren have helped? I hope so. Would an indoor radio have helped? I hope so. It was lucky that, you know, neither one of them perished in the fire. Um, I know that, you know, certainly for my neighborhood, it's easy to see. We have a canyon. The thing would be a very effective. So I'm, I'm all in favor of uh, and once again, too, I don't know the tsunami danger here, but it can also double there. And I just want to add too, that part of what the study will do is look at the different technologies available. Because it's not just one technology of sirens at all. And there's high power, low power, different ways of communicating, ones that even have abilities to communicate messages and different things. So it's a new world there too. And um, I I think we owe it to, you know, citizens to make sure we're doing our best to alert them in emergencies. And that's just my thought and, and my motion would be to pass this.
I'm going to second it and then Steve, would you like to discuss that?
Yeah, just, I, you know, look, I'm, I'm, I hope they work also. Like I said, the the concern that I have, at least the reading I've done, says that they may, you know, whatever fire it was, the one that started by the tunnel started like four in the morning. Everybody was in their house asleep. I mean, if they can't hear, it's not going to help us. But that's not, I'm, I I don't have a problem with that. Lisa, is there, once these guys go out and do this study that they're going to do now for placement of these things and they come back with information regarding what the ongoing cost of having this. Is, do we get like a report on that before we go to the next step? Or is this thing just keep rolling? What happens next?
Rob, you want to take it?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we want to bring that report and kind of bring a presentation to council and kind of let everybody know what the placement is, what their recommendation is, on, ongoing costs, everything. We want to make sure it's, it's presented to you guys and you can kind of see it. Absolutely.
Okay, so we're getting another bite of this when it comes back to that point.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. There'll be other bites. Absolutely.
Thanks, guys. That's it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kelsey, will you take the role, please?
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Excuse me, yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Lukewarm, yes.
Motion carries.
Well, in contrast to that lukewarm, yes, I have a very enthusiastic, this meeting is adjourned. And I will.
See you at six-thirty.
See you at six-thirty.
Have a good, guys.
Thank you.